Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in Nutley Sun on February 6th, 2020, and posted on district website. A revised meeting notice was sent out on April 8th, advising that this meeting was a virtual online meeting. We have the flag salute please. Our pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just as well. Have the roll call Mrs. Kukus, please.
Mr. Conestella? Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Here.
Mr. Jamail? Mr. Jamail?
He was here.
Yeah.
He's here, we'll find him.
Mr. Ferraro? Mrs. Quirk?
Yeah.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yeah.
Ms. Arrow?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Is Mr. Jamail here?
He's here.
He was here.
His mic is off.
Okay, what about Mr. Ferraro?
No, he is not here and Mr. Conestella is not here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, look, can we have a moment of silence, folks? First of all, for unfortunately the people that we've lost to coronavirus, our friends, our neighbors, a relative of Mr. Riley who I feel sorry for, very sorry for. Also included in our moment of silence, we lost one of our teachers of retiring age, Mr. Charles, Dr. Charles Fusella, recently, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for everyone. Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes, please.
Make a motion for the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Made by Mr. Riley, approved by Mrs. Brown. Okay. Correspondence? Any correspondence, Ed? Okay. Madeline, any correspondence that you know of?
No.
Okay. Presentations. Mrs. Mitchell, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You are on.
Okay.
Time for your presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. I'd like to present to you tonight our district recipients of the NJ DOE's Seal of Bilinguism. The state seal of bilinguism is a designation from the Department of Education, identifying graduating high school students who are able to demonstrate proficiency in English in addition to one or more languages. This designation encourages students to pursue bilinguism. It honors the skills our students attain and can be evidence of skills that are attractive to future employers and college admissions offices. The seal of bilinguism becomes a permanent honor placed on each student's transcript. We'd like to thank the Nutley Board of Education and our administration for their ongoing support of our world language program, as well as our teachers and parents for their constant dedication to the study of languages as we prepare our students for a global community once they leave our classrooms. The following 46 students have demonstrated proficiency in both English, as well as another language, and in some cases, too. We are incredibly proud of their hard work and determination in becoming bilinguist. Recipients, we congratulate you tonight and know you will continue to develop these important skills as you become global citizens and pursue a variety of future endeavors. We will start with the recipients of the Spanish seal of bilinguism. Erin Lee. Allison Montan. Anthony Guerrero. Emily Ostrowski. Caitlin Gavidia. Isabella Rivera. Kimberly McChrystal. Brandon Borja. Ian Vega. Caitlin Mui. Allison Iglesias. Julia Baronowski. Kimberly Rivera. Brian Tlaxani. Luca Vespa. Meredith Carson. Leah Gill. Valeria Oviedo. Ava Tucker. Janie Juat. Naomi Franco. Melanie Bumpes. Nicholas Cruz. Nicholas Duca. Lena Crane. Brian Grodsky. Nicole Tamara. Nicole Flores. Sofia Torres. Congratulations to those receiving the Spanish seal of bilinguism. Continuing with the Italian recipients of the seal of bilinguism. Tiffany Morello. Alicia Zajak. Caitlin Gavidia. Samia Devedi. Matthew Oliveira. Jada Makari. Anthony Intili. Nicole Tamara. Natalie Wellman. Gabriela Rizzo. Alvaro Flores. And Sofia Torres. Congratulations to those receiving the Italian seal of bilinguism. For our recipients of the Latin seal of bilinguism, Shannon Redstone. Gianni Faraco. And Matthew McCullough. Congratulations to you. And finally, recipients of the Polish seal of bilinguism, Julia Baronowski. And Brian Grodsky. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of them. How do, are we going to recognize them other than obviously what you did tonight? Do we, do we give them something? Are we gonna mail them something? Are we going to do a virtual, you're gonna do a virtual with them?
So they'll be in the mail, hopefully sometime soon, a certificate from the state. When the state sends those certificates to us, we'll be forwarding them to them. And they, the seniors graduating this year will receive a medal, which we already have in district, and they'll be receiving those at graduation.
Okay. Thank you very much for the hard work you do.
Thank you.
You be safe.
You too, thank you.
Mr. Capella.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's well. It's that time of the year again where I conduct my presentation for the biannual, or my biannual report regarding HIV. As I do every, every twice a year, I always start my presentation with the definition of what is hip. Ian, thank you. As we're fully aware, when we're dealing with an incident of HIV or an alleged HIV incident, our anti-bullying specialists conduct an investigation. In that investigation, they have to determine if this incident meets the criteria for HIV. The first, in the definition, the incident is deemed hip. It could be any gesture, any written, verbal, physical act, or electronic communication. It can be one incident or a series. However, it has to be reasonably, it has to be reasonably perceived or being motivated by an individual's actual or perceived characteristic or any other distinguishing characteristic. Ian, please, thank you. Under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, here are the distinguishing characteristics. The state also has included any other distinguishing characteristic. Could it also be deemed as a hip? Ian? Technical component of a law, it could be on, the incident could be on school property, a school-sponsored function, on a school bus, if they're going on a field trip and not on school grounds. It could also be on off-school grounds, Saturday night, on a Friday night, during one of our school breaks. However, for it to be considered off-school grounds, there has to be a disruption or interfere with the operation of the school or the right of the students to receive an education. In addition to those two components, the third component, also there has to be some type of harm or impact on the student. Physical, emotional harm, or planning to place them in reasonable fear of physical, emotional harm, damaging property. It could be insulting or demeaning to the student or a group of students. Or it could be, it creates a hostile educational environment for the student. Ian? I am the anti-bullying coordinator. At each school, we have anti-bullying specialists who are the investigators of incidents, of alleged incidents of hip. Ian, please. Thank you. Through our investigation, we have to make a determination, what are the findings? They could be one of three. It was, the incident was a non-hip event where it did not meet the criteria of hip. However, another, another finding could be that it did meet the criteria for hip and it's considered a hip event. Or it didn't meet the criteria for hip, however, it was a code of conduct violation. And here are the statistics from September, this past September through December. Right? The district had a total of 34 cases that were investigated. Four of them were from Lincoln. Six were from Radcliffe. Five were at Spring Garden. Five were also at Washington. At Yanacoh, we had four investigations. At the middle school, we had six. And at Nutley High School, we had four. Breaking it down according to the elementary level, at Lincoln School, we had four investigations. Two were considered non-hip and the other two were considered code of conduct. So at Lincoln School, there were no hip events. Out of the six investigations at Radcliffe, two were hip, two were non-hip, and two were code of conduct. Where at Spring Garden, the five, there were no hip event, there were no hip incidents. There were three... Sorry, Ian, I can't see that, can't see that well anymore. There were three non-hip events and there were two incidents of hip. At Washington School, cannot see it that well anymore, Ian. I'm trying to present it and I can't see. Is there any way we can make that larger, Ian?
There'll be two confirmed, one non-hip, two code of conduct.
Thank you. And at Yanacoh?
Four, four investigations, zero non-hip. I'm sorry. Four, I'm sorry, four non-hip and zero for the code of conduct and zero for confirmed hips.
Okay. Ian, is there any way I can make that bigger, the screen?
Joe, if you have the grid on, turn the grid off and it'll be bigger for you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Perfect, thank you, thank you. Ian, please, next one, thank you. So at the elementary school, we have four, a total of four cases. Two of them were at Radcliffe and two were at Washington. At the two at Radcliffe, the protected characteristics that were targeted were, was color, race, disability, and another. Even though there's four distinguishing characteristic, in one case, it could be one distinguishing characteristic that were targeted, or it could have been three. Or it could have been two each. At Washington School, we had two cases. One was based upon race and the other one was based on another distinguishing, other distinguishing characteristic. At the middle school, we had six incidents, investigations. Two were considered hip. Three were non-hip and one was a code of conduct. At Nutley High School, out of four cases, there were no confirmed hips and there were two non-hip and two code of conduct. At the middle school, we had two cases. The targeted was race twice and sexual orientation once. In these cases, what were some of the remedial measures that were conducted to remediate the situation? There was discipline. As you can see, they're listed. Support services, school-based counseling, either through the school counseling department or the special services department. Various assignments could either be a project, a reflection assignment, write a reflection or reaction to a paper, an article, or a video. Other things that have been done throughout the course of that time, from September to December, reaching out to parents to obtain their support. Parent conferences, schedule changes, monitoring by staff, verbal warning, and different lessons in the classroom as well. Throughout the course of September to through December, one of my goals is to make sure that we train all new staff. That we conduct a new staff training in August as well as throughout the school year. At Board of, at our meetings, there are new staff that are hired throughout the school year and my goal is to make sure that we train all those new staff members. Meet with the anti-bullying specialist. The anti-bullying specialists do speak at faculty meetings. I believe it was October 10th. I met with all the administrators and administrative team meeting at the high school. They conduct parent trainings as well. I'm part of a member, I'm a member of the Online Anti-Bullying Coordinator Association. Throughout the school year, to me, it's very important that we acknowledge our district, our community, our students for a job well done. So there could be different announcements, posts on social media, acknowledging positive accomplishments. We also provide, I also provide parents and the community, all stakeholders, information. There is an HIV link that is on the district website as well. Thank you, Ian. Throughout, especially throughout September, December, prevent our effort. In addition to dealing with any type of investigation, it's all about prevention. How can we educate our students? At the elementary, we have a character education curriculum. K to 12, the health curriculum. Throughout the school year, there are different session lessons that infuse HIV prevention and character education into the curriculum. Part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is that we train all students on HIV. That is a goal of all of our anti-bullying specialists throughout the district. We also work with the Nutley Police Department. They have the LEAD program that goes into the sixth grade classes. In addition to the middle school having the advisory lessons, we, the sixth graders now are conducting advisory lessons, which could be based upon anything that could be character education related. The Nutley High School, just another, you know, just another example. The Nutley High School Athletic Department does community service projects throughout the course of the year. School-level peer-to-peer activities. It's not even just about how, about just educating students, but how are they educating each other at different levels? You know, it could be something simple as the safety patrol or the ambassadors at the elementary program. At the middle school, we have the Real Raiders Club. At the Nutley High School, they have the Ambassadors Club. Different assemblies, fundraisers, theme days, Spear Week, building a sense of community as well as character. In addition to all of our prevention efforts, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights requires that school districts recognize the Week of Respect, which is the first week of October. I'm glad to say, one of the efforts that we've done this year actually was at the end of September and we pushed it into the Week of Respect as well. It was, it's called the, it starts with Hello Week, which is part of the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative. Dr. Glazer also helped us out at the middle school to receive funding for their program at the middle school. At the elementary school, they conducted lessons. So not only were conducted in a class, but they had to do an assignment that they had to bring home on kindness. As I alluded to at the middle school, we had the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative come to our school and they had an assembly. And it was the Shout Hello program. And after, they're gonna be coming in as well as part of the, we receive funding. They're gonna be coming in again next year. And we conducted our lessons in the advisory. And at the high school, Mr. Williams had the whole week, the whole month of October, the theme was respect. In addition to the announcement, as well as they had a respect talk law at the high school. Just, just briefly, part of my initial two, or one of my responsibilities is to deliver all this information to the state. And it's broken down twice a year. In January, I have to provide all the data to your state. That's part of the student state, state data system. In September, I provide our grades for the previous period, our Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights grade. We have yet to receive them from the state in New Jersey. Upon receiving those grades, they'll be posted on our district website.
Thank you very much, Mr. Capella. Any, any board members have any comments? Thank you very much. Dr. Soldier, Dr. Riley, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Joe, for everything. Actually, Mr. Kuzinski, Mr. Bania is gonna get us started on the program review process and then the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bania, you're on.
Thanks, Dr. G. Actually, Janine and I are gonna start just by introducing the process and some of the overall findings. We created screencasts that were shared with board members to review the individual program reviews and we just wanna spend some time highlighting the process for this year. So Janine, would you like to start by sharing your screen?
Sure, perfect. Okay, hi, everyone. Just give me one second, I'm gonna share some slides with you. Are you able to see my screen now?
Yes, it looks good, Janine.
Perfect, okay. Hi, everyone, board members. I think you've had the opportunity to view the program review screencast for English as a Second Language and Library Media and Career and Technical Education. Before we review the specifics recommendations of the program review, we just wanted to spend some time going over the larger curriculum renewal process in just a few minutes. So state code requires the review of curricula at least every five years. So to that end, as you know, our district has a cycle in place to ensure that the curriculum and instructional practices reflect not only just the current standards, but also what we believe to be best practice. So Mr. Bania and I work closely with our content coordinators to support this process and we focus on specific content areas annually and we allocate resources accordingly for that process. So for our purposes tonight, we're gonna focus on year four of this process, which is the program review. But I'll just take a few minutes and review the cycle in general for people who might not be as familiar with it. So although program review is year four in the process, this step is where the planning really begins for curriculum adjustment and possible instructional shifts. So during a program review year, Mr. Bania and I work closely with the coordinators and we really take a detailed look at the specific content areas in program review. This includes analyzing the current curriculum, ensuring alignment to standards, researching best practices, looking at neighboring districts and what we're potentially doing that we might want to implement as well. During program review, we also sometimes consider larger programming shifts to move the district forward. And the program review year ends with the rewriting of curriculum in what we call a draft form. So from there, we move on to year five, which is the implementation of the draft curriculum with pilot materials. So after the program review is completed in year five, so after this program review, these content areas that we speak of tonight will go into a curriculum rewrite and then into year five. And they'll develop a draft curriculum based on the recommendations from their program review. This draft is piloted for a full year during year five and this allows the teachers to provide valuable feedback on how the curriculum is structured. So they talk about whether or not the materials are appropriate. The coordinators meet with their teachers to ensure that the pacing and the scope and sequence is complete. And they make any adjustments that they need to make sure that they meet the individual needs of specific students as well. From there, we go into year one of the cycle, which is where the new curriculum is fully implemented and standardized. So that's what we call year one or the beginning of the cycle just because from an outside perspective, that's when the curriculum really becomes visible to everyone publicly. If you're a little bit more intimately connected with the process, you might know about the program review and things like that. But from an outside perspective, that year one is when you have that full implementation and it's really visible. In year one, professional development is also provided to teachers to support the updates. And then that content area would move into year two and three, which is when the approved curriculum is implemented really consistently. Our content coordinators continue to support teachers in year two and three and they start to also focus on things like ensuring common assessments. And more and more, these assessments are being administered in our LMS Schoology, which is great because it allows for a more detailed data analysis. So adjustments to the scope and sequence can also be made in year two and three as the coordinators get that feedback on pacing. This next slide just provides an outline of where each of our content areas is currently in the curriculum renewal cycle. So for the purposes of tonight, you'll see that English as a Second Language and Career and Technical Education and Library Media are here under the program review slash curriculum rate in year four. Just to give you some context, similarly, last year, our science and health and PE completed program review. So last spring, you heard from those coordinators. And this year, we're implementing that new draft science curriculum because that's now in year five as well. So looking ahead towards next year, social studies and fine and performing arts will be in program review. I'm now gonna hand it over to Mr. Bania to discuss a little bit more of the program review process.
Thanks, Janine, that was great. Just to give you another, another visual of our process, you have the five-year cycle up top and you see the fourth year really broken into, down into a yellow and red and the yellow and brown below. Just to talk about what goes on during this time, it begins, actually, we began last summer and it starts with each content area defining their current program. This entails them looking at staffing, resources, as well as curriculum and standards. In many of the areas, new standards were released from the state. So this was a good time to review curriculum and write curriculum moving forward. We're at a pivotal, pivotal place with standards coming out. From there, the coordinator analyzes guiding questions and puts out different, different ways to get input from teachers, parents, and students. So you may have been a part of a survey that went out or information at a department meeting or faculty meeting, brainstorming activities. These all come into play to answer the guiding questions. Then the coordinator looks at the student performance data. There are various data sets in different areas that should guide our thought process moving forward, from AP exams to end-of-course assessments to, I know Dr. Shosha looked at signing out books and library media studies. So different data sets came into play at different areas. And then we go out to see what other programs might do. This is a very important part of the process. We, we believe in going out and looking at best practices and understanding our need in Nutley and seeing what other districts are doing. It's led us in many directions and a lot of programs going through review right now went out and looked at sample programs. We went to some middle school, look at the library media. We went to several places to look at the CTE programs with Dr. Riley. Personally, been a part of some of these visits and they're very informative. We're also bringing staff members with us and we get a nice collegial-type atmosphere where we're meeting with other staff from other districts and it's very beneficial. And then the coordinator takes all the information and synthesizes a program recommendation and curriculum document, which is anywhere from 40 to 75 pages long and that's shared with our academic committee and as well will be made public after this, this process. But it puts together all of our, all of our thoughts with the program review. And then we move into a curriculum rewrite and this is typical, the time where we move to write curriculum to do, to move the program as the document shares to write curriculum, to do, to move the program as the document shares as the guidance of the coordinator. And we do this, we write assessments, we do scope and sequence work, we look at essential questions, standards, and we tie it into resources, and we come up with foundational units and build the program. Sometimes, the program is shifted in great capacity, other times, small tweaks to the program, so this is done based on where they were. Janine, can you move me to the next slide? In preparing for a virtual review of the programs and sharing out, we did provide screencasts where the coordinators went through their document and went through their program review, and we do have them here to answer questions for the board based on their findings. But I, just before we turn it over to questions, I just want to take a couple minutes and highlight some of the big focus areas that the different program reviews and departments went through. So, the CTE program review was led by Dr. James Riley, did a wonderful job, we went on several site visits, used department meetings to collaborate with his teachers, and from there, he focused on cluster pathways and the use of academies in the CTE field, and I know there's work already being done in the Health Sciences Academy, applications to state and solidifying that, and he sees this growing in Nutley in certain areas that we already have, and some new areas as well. He focused on intermediate programming as well. When I mean intermediate, I mean feeder programs leading to these clusters, leading to different areas, as well as intermediate grade span at the middle school. He's specifically looking at some engineering classes and some ways to take the programming from the middle school and turn it up a little bit. He's also making recommendations on facilities and staffing he was looking at through his program review process. Dr. Shojah did a wonderful job with the Library Media Program Review. She did everything from analyzing the book counts coming in and coming out each year of the different buildings, to the staffing needs, to the curriculum. This area received new standards from their National Librarian Association as well as the state, and a lot of her work will be moving the Library Media Program to different units as it moves through sequential progression of technology, STEAM in different areas moving forward. One of the biggest things she looks to do as well is infuse technology. There was facilities, including the high school media center, as well as staffing needs she looked at as well. And finally, Ms. Julie Michau worked on the ESL portion of her role, she's World Language and ESL, and she looked at certain components of how to position students best for success at the elementary level with clustering initiatives. She also looked for a K-8 comprehensive program to connect the schools in ESL. She also accessed the WIDA and New Jersey Student Learning Standards to align the curriculum appropriately. One of the other things Mrs. Michau mentioned frequently throughout her program is a sheltered instruction progression where she trains teachers on different strategies to provide support in generic classrooms. So, these were the big takeaways from their program review. I would like to ask the board if they have any questions, and we do have the coordinators here, thanks for coming on, and they would be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, board members, any questions that we have now?
I just have one question, Charlie. You referenced an engineering program possibly filtering into middle school. What kind of curriculum would that entail as well as staffing requirements?
Sure, Dr. Riley, I can begin to answer that, and then you can jump in at any time if you'd like. So, we looked at several programs, Mr. Riley, and one of the best out there is something called Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way, we actually looked at, I looked at as a science coordinator back when I did a program review, maybe five or six years ago, and it was, it was an investment of staffing as well as materials, but hands down, and we visited, at that time, we visited Mount Hebrew Middle School in Montclair, who runs it. It is the best infusion of integrated technology in a STEAM-type program, and results from the program review were to make the investment to move to a Project Lead the Way pathway at the middle school level. Dr. Riley, if you want to add to that, I'm sorry if I spoke a little too much.
No, sure, absolutely. In our current configuration, we would not require any additional staffing. What we would do, however, is bring in a Project Lead the Way curriculum, and then we would provide training for our existing staff member to roll out that curriculum to the students.
What about classroom space?
So, we would use the existing classroom space, but we would redesign it. There are some very heavy tables and some machinery in there that we would not need for the Project Lead the Way. So, we would actually make use of that machinery and bring it over to the high school, and we would use that with our robotics classes. So, we wouldn't be, we'd actually be making out in terms of not having to purchase materials at the high school. The existing classroom space would just actually be turned and reconfigured, but we wouldn't need to modify it in any other way.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other board members? Mrs. Michau, can you go back to that presentation again? I have a question for you, but I don't see the screen in front of me on what... Okay, when you, when you talked, or can you give me some idea what you talk about with sheltered instruction progression, Mrs. Michau, please?
Sure, no problem. So, sheltered English instruction is a training that is provided to mainstream teachers, and usually, this training is either provided by someone like myself who's been trained to train teachers, or an external person who would come in and train teachers as well. And basically, sheltered English instruction is a variety of strategies given to these mainstream teachers to be able to make the content and the curriculum accessible to our English language learners. And these strategies have been proven not only to be helpful to our Ls, but also to all of our students in the classroom. And so, this training would be, some of our secondary teachers have already been trained, and my progression would include me continuing the training at the secondary level and having training begin at the elementary level. This is also part of our bilingual waiver through the state of New Jersey.
Thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
Board members, any other questions? If not, Mr. Banyan, Janine, Dr. Riley, Ms. Shojah, Ms. Michau, I wanted to thank you very much. To me, it was a very informative presentation, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski.
Okay, Dr. Glazer, I think you're up.
Yep, and I just want to say, not only thank you for being here, but I kind of am enjoying that our meeting has the same cadence as any other board meeting, even though it's virtual. I love that not only are you here for questions, but we can see the presentation, and I've missed seeing your faces, so happy to see you all too. We have now completed 26 days of remote district operations, including virtual learning, just like it does for you here, it also seems like forever. Everyone is working longer and harder than before. I am so grateful for the engagement and support, all of the ideas and feedback over the past weeks. We spent the first two weeks moving to the Schoology Learning Management System. We use that for the delivery of instruction. Dr. Shojah, Janine, Kent, the whole team really spent a tremendous time with all of the staff, making sure people had the knowledge that was necessary to be able to move to that system. Those first two weeks were heavy with professional learning as well, and that's been ongoing. Dr. Shojah has continued to do drop-in office hours, if you will, to make sure that everybody has been able to continue along this path. The next two weeks, we really spent integrating resources and tools, and last week and this coming week, we're beginning to move to, oops, I lost my page, we've been able to integrate live feedback via video sessions, and most of the teachers were already doing that. We've now made that something that is required. Moving forward, and in the next weeks, all teachers, whether they're general education or special education teachers, are going to connect with their students live on at least two days of instruction to connect with their students, answer questions, provide feedback, maybe meet in small groups. I think that all of us really miss the students, and the students miss us, we miss each other. And this kind of live feedback and direct instruction will just continue to help our virtual learning and remote operations move forward. Like I said, we, not just this meeting, but we continue to have our cabinet meetings, to meet on Wednesdays with our principals and coordinators. Principals are still leading their faculty meetings. Mrs. Locan Solo and Mr. Banyan are still doing grade-level meetings and department meetings. I also continue my weekly meetings with staff and with the EAM. So, in addition to all of that, we've continued providing the ongoing professional learning. You'll hear a little bit more about that during the academic resolutions, really using every available tool, and I think that this is not going to go away, right? Even as we continue with learning, I think the skills and strategies that we're implementing, the opportunities to truly integrate technology, not just replace paper and pencil, are going to stay with us for a long time. In addition to all of those things, we've also provisioned to support mental health and wellness for students, staff in the community, our strategic planning team on health and wellness has continued to look at resources and curriculum. We'll hear more about that during the budget presentation. I would say that moving to this remote operation, whether it's instruction, or direct deposit of payroll, or these kinds of meetings have really been an evolution, and I'm going to always remain proud that we were proactive. You know, we started to survey regarding devices and technology access in the weeks before we closed, so that by the date of our remote learning, our first date on March 17th, every household had a device and access to the internet. We were proactive in working with Pomtonian and the Nutley Family Service Bureau to provide breakfast and lunch for all of our free and reduced lunch students, beginning with the single session on Monday, March 16th, and in addition, through the grant from the Department of Agriculture, beginning March 26th, the grant that I was able to secure with Pomtonian feeds all Nutley resident children under the age of 18, and that will happen for the remainder of the school closure. Pomtonians provided fresh meals, they are not the shelf-stable, you know, army rations that you might consider, but they've also made additional donations of produce and other items that we've been able to share with all the residents of the township, particularly our senior citizens. I also will forever be grateful to the more than 50 volunteers from the Nutley Family Service Bureau and the community that serve our students, and for the additional support from the food pantry to make sure that no family is turned away without services, whether that's because of food insecurity or mental health illness. Our buildings have remained closed so that all of our staff could self-quarantine with their families. That commitment to maintaining healthiness for everybody has been important to us. Again, all functions of the district are remotely operational on March 30th, April 14th, and coming up tomorrow and May 1st, myself, Mr. V Meister, and Mr. Perigi have gone into the buildings for additional technology, PPE supplies for our first responders, student medical supplies, sometimes it's central office paperwork. All of this has been scheduled so that we were not in the same buildings, and we could deliver those materials with no contact. As required, our technology technicians and Mr. V Meister on, again, a scheduled basis, fix and replace devices, we do that out of one of the trailers, again, done without contact. Additionally, mail is delivered to one of the trailers weekly, and a member of our secretarial staff sorts the district mail and scans all those emergent pieces right on site. Our members of the custodial maintenance staff have also assisted lowering all the flags to half-staff, removing basketball hoops, again, working with no contact. Beginning Wednesday, one member of the team will start cutting grass at one school, followed by a second staff member doing the edging and weeding. Thanks, Mr. Perigi, for creating a schedule that makes sure all that required work gets done. Hard to believe, we're already back to grass cutting and dandelion weeding, but thank you again for making sure that happens without contact. As the governor makes his directives, I think some of you may have seen today that he laid out his roadmap for the future, but that roadmap did not change any information about school closure or his directives about eventual opening. He's still planning to do that on May 15th. As we get that information, we can make decisions regarding additional building access, including for cleaning, or for some of the other projects, maybe the library project Dr. Riley talked about, or some of the other projects that we had brewing before, before the virus started brewing. At that time that the governor directs, we can also start sharing some of the proactive planning that we've been doing for a whole variety of options that have to be considered for the end of year, whether it's lockers or celebrations for moving up and graduations. All those discussions and decisions will be done collectively, and then we'll communicate that to the community. We do want to share with the board that on a regular basis, we hear from the staff, and the entire staff appreciates the board's leadership and commitment to all of their health and safety, as well as the financial security, and for the support necessary to move forward with district working in every department and education. Additionally, the community has expressed their gratitude for the district's support of the township's first responders, what we were able to provide to Clara Moss Hospital, and what we do for the Nutley Family Service Bureau on an ongoing basis. So, again, words I'm not sure capture the amount of gratitude. What's happening in Nutley should be a model for the rest of the state and the country, and it'll serve us well if we remember that we are truly Nutley stronger together. Please don't forget to check Facebook to participate in Nutley High School Student Council's Second Spirit Week starting tomorrow, and to also see all of the wonderful things happening with our staff and students throughout the learning community. Look forward to seeing you either online or on Facebook soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mr. Appleton? Ed, are you with us? Let's move to Mr. Perigi. Mike, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you, President. On Tuesday, April 24th, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, April 14th, we turned off all boilers and did a, I know, 24th, I wish. Turned off all boilers at schools and did a building check. As Dr. Glazer mentioned, we also walked the school district, getting items for particular schools, particular teachers, and helping Ian with his IT information. We also talked about LED lighting project for all classrooms and offices that'll be done this summer. 90% of the money is coming from state grants, bonds, the district is getting complete LED lighting for less than $5,000, which is fantastic. The Davis property was demoed. We will continue to cut grass and clean around schools, and thank you to Dr. Glazer and the Nutley Board of Ed for the support in keeping my staff safe. I cannot thank you enough for what you have done for us and my staff, second to none. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi, and you pass it on to your staff. We appreciate what they've done for us up to now and what's going to be ahead for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our committee reports. Lisa, Mrs. Dantzer, can you start us off, please?
Yes, Mr. President. The academic committee met on April 22nd. Dr. Glazer shared the proposal, proposed sidebar agreement with the EAM regarding sick bank usage. Dr. Glazer reviewed the IMAC insurance meeting, held on Wednesday, April 8th, and the decision for the district to self-insure to a lower, to lower the substantial percentage, increase cost of health insurance for the 2020-2021 budget. There is no change to the provider or health insurance offerings. Mr. Banyan reviewed personnel items, including the process for restarting the BA interviews and the current interviews for open and anticipated positions. Dr. Glazer reviewed the process of non-tenure review and the change to state deadlines for annual evaluations. The reappointment agenda will be presented for BOE approval at the first June BOE meeting rather than the previously scheduled May BOE meeting. Dr. Glazer reviewed the advertised budget for 2020-2021. There is little change from 2019-2020 due to increased salaries and the health benefits. It was recommended that the remaining bank cap funds be used for an approximate overall 2.25% budget. The public budget presentation and vote to approve the final budget will be held on Tuesday, May 5th. Ad hoc budget committee meeting will be convened following the budget approval. Dr. Glazer reviewed central office reimagination, new titles, job descriptions, and updated organizational chart will be presented at the May meeting for implementation July 1st. Salaries are included in the 2020-2021 budget. All will be on the reappointment agenda in June. Dr. Glazer provided a legal update since the April 14th closed session for the BOE. She followed up with district attorneys regarding next steps to the review. A general discussion regarding year-end activities was held. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 13th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Fred Scalera, are you able to give us an administration report, or should we pretty much, what Mrs. Dantzer covered, I know, is the same thing we covered in Admin?
Yes, and I didn't pull up the meeting minutes because I didn't know.
I know, I know, Fred. It was a difficult time, I didn't know till the last minute that we weren't going to be there, but our administration meeting pretty much mirrored what Mrs. Dantzer spoke about. I think one thing that I did get out of our administration meeting was that there was some discussion with Mr. Perigi and the superintendent about looking for summer employment for some of our staff to help with the duties throughout the summer like we used to do. to help with the duties throughout the summer like we used to do.
Correct. They have it in district, haven't they?
Yes, definitely Nutley people. I appreciate that. Frank D'Mayo, are you able to give us an update on the Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah, I got you. Charlie, I think Dr. Glazer said she wanted you to go over what we discussed today in regards to finance.
Thanks, Frank. At today's finance meeting, we had a discussion concerning the moving forward with the Oval Project. The decision of the Finance Committee was, and bringing it to you now, is that we would continue moving forward with the Oval Project, going out on bid, accepting the bids, I believe, May 17th, if I have the date correct somewhere in that area, simply because we know the project's important. We want to move forward with it. Even if the state might have different plans on how we are able to spend our capital improvement money, we should be prepared to move forward if that's the case. That's what our discussion was about. Dr. Glazer, would you like to add anything else? Your mic is off, Doc.
Sometimes I just can't get that mouse to go. The only thing I would add is a reminder also that Mrs. Dancheck Martin said that on Tuesday, May 5th, we do have our public budget meeting. Mr. Appleton and myself will present the budget for next year for the board and the public to review. The final budget submission has to be to the state, May 19th. They have not changed that date, although they continue to update even some of the things we already updated. So we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Mrs. Zara, do you want to give us a policy update, committee report, please? Okay. Erica, are you with us?
I'm here. Yeah, I don't think there's a new one since last--
Okay. I wasn't sure there was. I just didn't want to miss anything.
Just didn't want to miss anything.
No worries.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's a feedback someplace in somebody's microphone. At this time, we come to the hearing of citizens-- excuse me, somebody has their mic on and it's feeding back. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Do we have any, Ian? Or I probably should check with Ian first. Any questions, Ian?
There have been no questions via email or chat so far, no.
Thank you. Mrs. Dancheck Martin, will you take academic resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President.
Quickly, Lisa, if you don't mind. We listed the areas where we would usually have resolutions where we don't, but work is still happening. So we still have included professional learning for an update, even though there's no resolutions. Field trip and then clinical experiences, just so the community can understand what's still going on. I'm not sure, Mr. Banier and Mrs. Locan Solo, who's doing which?
I can speak to PD. As you know, our district is not sending out PD at this time. And all of our PD has been happening, and a large amount of PD has been happening through this very process, through Google Meet. We continue to use Google Meet frequently to provide meaningful PD. And the goals of that PD is, you know, first to learn our technology tools that we're moving towards, but also to learn about remote learning, the strategies that we need to move to as remote learning progresses. We also need to check in frequently with staff members. So throughout the week, we are providing a lot of professional learning for our staff and our administrative team, and it's in a variety of forms. We have large-scale drop-ins that occur. Janita myself reached taken secondary elementary and provided time to show big-picture items to our staff. Dr. Shojia continues to provide twice-a-week drop-ins for people to rearrange their School G class or for them to learn something that they have a question about. She also provides very focused PD in things like Cody and Brain Pop and how to create an assessment in School G, as well as other features of Google Meet and things of that nature. Our departments and grade levels meet weekly, and many of this is in a drop-in capacity as well. We provide a time and we host an agenda, and people can put items on that agenda and we talk through some of the things we're experiencing. So throughout the week, we meet with different grades, different departments. Buildings have a faculty meeting as well. And we also provide a one-on-one support with teachers. We will schedule them some time to meet one-on-one with our administrative team, as well as administrators' one-on-one support to provide that direction that they need. Dr. Shojia has also provided a large amount of self-directed PD. She's created a Nutley Public Schools Technology Site with amazing amount of videos so teachers can learn what they need to about the technology we're using now, as well as certain other aspects such as Newzilla and Discovery Ed and Screencastify and some of the tools that we're working with right now. It's kind of funny because the state, you know, requires 20 hours of PD per year and teachers need to keep a log of that. And so far, while they're not, they're not making us keep that log this year, our teachers are still going to attending and experiencing a large amount of professional learning. I'd just like to say before we talk about the other items that we're still meeting as an LPDC. And we've been meeting tomorrow with Michelle Cristantello and other people from each building and talking about how the district's moving forward with professional learning. So that is still happening as well.
Kent, can I just jump in for a minute or two on the PD? So also, in addition to the PD that relates specifically to School G and virtual learning, we're continuing to offer the scheduled PD that we already had committed to with ELA, for example. So we have Gravity Goldberg's group presenting those PD sessions virtually and actually like giving a little bit of a different lens to the, to the content that she was going to share out and really looking at how to make learning meaningful for kids online. We're also going to be continuing to provide some of the mandated trainings, like dyslexia. We have a BOE webinar, so that's a PD that a lot of our lower elementary teachers are mandated to attend. So we're going to be pushing that out to them and asking them to watch that as well. So in addition to things that are specific to virtual learning, we're also continuing with a lot of the PD that we had planned, just delivering it in a different way.
Thank you very much.
Did you guys have other comments? Yep. Also, if you notice, we usually have clinical experiences, internships, and mentoring. Those are opportunities for our staff that are child study team members or educational leadership members working on their master's degree. At this time, we are not approving any of those experiences while we're working virtually. And we've spoken to our partners, particularly those at Montclair State, Fairleigh Dickinson, William Patterson, about trying to extend the registration deadline for all of those staff members and all of those people that would usually do a clinical, so that if we are able to return to school, they'll be able to add those experiences during drop-in ad and not have to postpone their final experiences or certification. At this time, the state is not doing any certification and licensure or substitute certificates. There's not a capability for fingerprinting. So all of those processes are on hold. And we are hopeful that our university partners and our actual clinicians are able to return to us soon. We value very much having the opportunity to have them with us.
Thank you. Can we go back to Mrs. Dancheck? Are you ready now to read the resolution, Mrs. Dancheck?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move Academic Resolution Number One as written.
I'll second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
No, Mr. Ferraro. Okay. Mrs. Quark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalera? Miss Aron?
Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Riley, can you take Administration Resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Administration and everyone explicitly come on.
Can I have the, any discussion, please? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Quark?
Yes.
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 Mr. Scalera? Miss Aron?
Yes.
Mr. Kukwonski?
Yes. Mr. D'Mayo, can you take Finance Resolutions, please?
I'd like to move Finance Resolutions 1 through 9 as written.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Quark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalera? Miss Aron?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Quark, can you take Personnel Resolution, please, Mrs. Quark?
Yes. Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move Personnel Resolution 1 as written.
Discussion. Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin, please.
Was that Mrs. Dancheck Martin, second?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Miss Quark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalera?
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Aron?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mrs. Zara, will you take Policy Resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move Policy Resolution 1 as stated.
Second.
I'm sorry. I missed it. Second, I'm sorry.
Lisa?
Yeah, I, yes, I seconded.
Lisa Dancheck, Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Mayo? You're off. You're saying yes.
Saying yes.
Mrs. D'Mayo?
You're on mute, Frank. You're on mute. Oh, yes, I see your head up. He said yes in his head.
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scalera?
Yes.
Miss Aron?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. At this time, we come to Hearing of Citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others are wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Excuse me. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions on open items? Ian, any questions?
There are still no email or chat questions at this time.
Thank you. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
Mr. President, I only have one-- Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Riley.
I'd just like to make a statement about something that you and I discussed over the phone this week. And that is committee meetings. When a board member is unable to make a committee meeting, especially now, that person should be accommodated. We're doing virtual meetings now, so there's no reason not to be able to have a meeting at a different time of day or a different day if there's a committee member that wants to make that meeting that's unable to make it at a suggested time. Is that difficult for any of the nine of us?
No, I did have a discussion with most of the chairpersons and made them aware of what's going on in this trying times. We need to try to accommodate each other. I know that was a difficult time for some people at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, but hopefully, moving forward, we should not run into that issue again.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, board members? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10412, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education respectfully closes executive session at this time to discuss personal or legal matters. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion we've made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting on the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist, is a motion. All in favor? Thank you. I'm sure Ian will supply--